A few minutes after five, we'll go ahead and let the rest of these people get in here before we kick off our meeting. Hey, we'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone out to our Western Weaver Planning Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 9th. It's just a little after five. I want to thank you all for being here. It's great to see the public coming in and supporting when we have these public hearings. So, starting off, if y'all would stand and repeat the pledge with me. Thank you for that. Go ahead and let the record indicate that all Planning Commission members are here and in attendance tonight, and I thank you all for your time and and being here with us tonight as well. First item on our agenda, and sorry, we kind of skipped over these in our pre-meeting, but our minutes from our April 11th meeting, did anybody see any issues or concerns with those minutes?
I found one just misspelled word. Instead of Andres Faverro, it's Andrew Faverro on the first voting item.
That's my alias. I think that's the first mistake I've had gins made on these minutes since you've been here, so. Okay, with that clarification, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
And a motion, do we got a second?
Second.
All those, any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Thank you. Okay. First item on our agenda is going to be a legislative item. It's item 2.1 ZMA 2023-04. This is going to be a public hearing for consideration of a requested rezon from A2 to RE15 of approximately 76 acres of vacant land. Director?
Thank you. This is a legislative item, and as you review this, you will open and close a public hearing with this. You will be forwarding on a recommendation to the county commission. So your recommendation will be just that. It will be a recommendation to that body, and then when we get to the county commission, they will also have a public hearing at that level as well. We want to make sure that the public's voice is heard. As you review this, you're very welcome to take in any public comment that is given, and at this stage of the game, any public comment that is given is never considered public clamor. This is a legislative item, and so you're, you have a lot of discretion as you look at this. You want to look at the general plan, make sure it's complying with that, and Mr. Loverino is going to be presenting this from our staff.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for that introduction, and it's a pleasure being here. It's also good to see all the public here to participate in this process. What we have before you is a, is an application from an applicant here in Weber County, a developer who does some work here in Weber County. What they're looking to do is is a rezone a portion of land that was previously known as Vicaro Village, Phase 2. They've changed the name to Longhorn Estates, and it occupies an area of roughly 76 acres. And their, their request entails rezoning from A2 zone, which is, stands for agricultural 2, to the RE15 zone, which is residential estates 15 zone. And the general location of this property is 640 South, 7500 West. And what I'll do is I'll just run through some slides and some of the finer points that are included with the staff report. And, and then we'll work on to the motions at the end. So here's, here's some maps showing some comparisons between the existing zoning and the proposed zoning. So you can see that area with the red hatch marks titled Longhorn Estates. And that's the property in question. And with this particular request, the land use code does provide direction regarding the duties of the planning commission for taking legislative action on such items as rezones. The decision to amend the zoning map is a matter committed to the legislative discretion of the county commission. Though the planning commission are encouraged to to consider the following factors, among other factors they deem relevant, and I'll go ahead and walk through those factors right now. So the rezone procedure includes this, this first factor A. The question we need to ask is, is this request consistent with the goals and objectives of the county's general plan? And I've prepared some maps to help us look at the general plan. So the smart growth principles are written into the general plan. There's, there's many, many different parts of smart growth principles that could be addressed from, from developments, residential developments. In this case, we're looking at smart growth principle for street connectivity, pathway and trail connectivity, open space and recreation facilities, dark sky consideration, culinary and secondary water conservation planning, emissions and air quality, renewable energy. And here is a, an image taken from the general plan. And this image incorporates many different layers, but I think what our focus is on this particular slide would be the area in yellow and also that rectangle in red. So that's the area that is proposed to be rezoned. And I'll point out some more things that are part of this map. So the, the area in the yellow, it actually indicates areas to be rezoned for medium density, which 15,000 square foot is considered as such. You're also looking at this map, you can see some, some green. They almost look like greenways. But in that case, what that indicates is green space and trails. Some of those also indicate the, by a white dashed line, those indicate roads. And the dark black lined in also indicate roads. Here's a screenshot of the plan that was submitted with some added comments from the planning division. So planning staff took some time to review the concept plan that was submitted. And what we've done is we've added some things that would help to qualify it under some smart growth principles, particularly roadway connectivity and pathway connectivity and some open space opportunities. You can see that 7500 West and 7100 West, which, let me see if I can get my arrow on. So this would be considered 7100 West. Those are proposed to become 80-foot right-of-ways. So we're calling that out on the review. You also have some interior neighborhood streets, which here is my black arrow, you can see that. Those are 60-foot right-of-ways. This neighborhood street here, 66 feet. And then also this one here is also 66. We're also calling out some 10-foot public pathways. And you'll notice that on the north edge running along this this canal, you have some pathway opportunities as well as pathways connecting up and through. Would, I'd also like to point out some details regarding road connectivity eastward. Typically, what we like to see is the formation of blocks from every, every 500 to 1,300 feet is a good space to start forming blocks. And we also look at, in this particular circumstance, we're looking at around 1,200 feet measuring from from the, the north edge all the way to the south edge. So we, we made some comments, what's the potential here for a road connecting eastward? And also, what's the potential for a road connecting eastward here? And that's, that's one of our primary objectives when reviewing some of these preliminary plans. And the next question is, is this compatible with the overall character of the existing development in the vicinity of the subject property? But primarily what this, the space is primarily used is, you know, open natural grazing ground with some farming and large lots, one acre plus lots. And here is a, an image showing the the subdivision plan overlaid on top of this, just to give you an idea of potential residential development. And how may this adversely affect adjacent property? I'm going to get some notes directly from my report for that question. Okay, so the the, how this might affect adjacent property is basically you're going to see an increase in traffic. You're going to see an increase in people. There's probably going to be some noticeable noise, and there's going to be some additional demands on the infrastructure. But the infrastructure that is in the area is pretty limited, particularly to this piece of land. And are there, what type of facilities and services? Such as roadways, parks, recreation facilities, schools, stormwater drainage systems, water supplies and wastewater and refuge collection. Are they adequate to service a development of this size? Here's a map showing the rezon area, and the, you can see that square in green is showing, indicates Reese Park. And we're pretty close by, around about four and a half, maybe five mile drive eastward to the nearest school. You've got an elementary school and a high school there going, that new high school being built right now. And majority of the, the, the other services like markets and hospitals, you'd have to travel around eight miles eastward to get to any of these things. Can this be developed in a manner that will not substantially degrade the ecological and natural resources in this area? Currently, there's, there's, there, what's being done on the property is relegated mostly to your agrarian type impacts. Fertilizing, animal grazing, irrigation, things like that. One could argue those, those impacts from agriculture would be reduced if a residential development came in place. With the traffic mitigation plans, or will the traffic mitigation plan prevent transportation corridors from diminishing below an acceptable level of service? And that's something that, that is probably clearly evident when you, when you add more cars to the roads, even if there's residential traffic, it's going to make an impact. It's going to make an impact to nearby intersections. So the intersection at 7500 West and 900 South and 7100 West and 900 South. And it's also important to note that 7500 West is really not built to a county standard. It's, it's very narrow and it needs plenty of work. The developer is aware of that, and the, the county engineering, I was able to collect some comments from them with, related to specifically to that. It's, it's recommended from the county engineer that the, a traffic study would need to be done. And also because the traffic study will help to kind of guide how that road should be, if, what type of improvements need to be made to 7500 West? And also to, to pinpoint areas that could become a problem for whether it be safety or or traffic. And moving on to the model motion, there are many options that you could take. You have a wide, wide variety of options to take in this legislative decisions. The staff has provided model motions in your report. And I, I'm just going to quickly touch on the, the options. A motion for a positive recommendation as the plan is presented. A motion for a positive recommendation with changes, specifically changes that staff has, has indicated on their, on our red lines. A motion to table. A motion to recommend denial. And that concludes what I had to say this evening. Any questions?
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner, any comments for staff? Questions? Thanks Felix.
I think before we open up this public hearing, I'd just like to kick it off and say that for one, I said, I appreciate you being here and the, and the concerns that we're going to hear. We have some of the same concerns, I feel, with this. I feel this is before the, the commission and at the point of a hearing prior than it should be. There are several things I feel is missing from this, from being complete. And there are a couple of major things, you know, infrastructure is a huge question out here. And as part of the ordinance to, to be a complete application to move these forward, we should see acknowledgement letters from the service providers, which we're missing. And I think that's something that, that should have, should have been in here prior to, to come in to this point, but with that being said, like, I, I'm glad you're all here, and I do want to hear your concerns on, on the issue. So Commissioners, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing on this item.
Chair, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
I got a motion, though I got a second. Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That passes. Okay, we are now in a public hearing on this item for this rezon. All that wish to speak, please come up, give us your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to, we'll work with you, since we've got a short agenda tonight, but generally we try and limit comments to three minutes, so. And just as a side note on this, we, as you give us comments, don't think we're not listening to you. We are keeping notes and stuff. This isn't, we'll, we'll hear your comments, and then we'll try and run through and address all of them once the, the public hearing is closed.
Neil Davis, 7212 West, 900 South. Our family owns the property south of the the Carroll Village and part of Marriott's property there. One of the concerns I have is quarter acre lots per sewer. For septic systems, there has been no perk test done. As I've worked our fields, there's no pipe standing in at least the Marriott park. There was some perk test done in the Vicaro Village, but not for this density. Also, there's a drain ditch that is not shown. That's right along them three roads that are going south. It's approximately six feet deep. It's a county drain. Now, does the county have an easement along that side for cleaning the ditch, or is it just our side? But it's on our property. And I'm concerned if they put 100 houses, am I going to be liable because the county's drain ditch is on my property? If a kid gets down in there? You know, it's a big concern of mine. As well as they've now said that I have to put roads through our property, they're showing them adjoining our property, and that's not the way I'm subdividing mine. Mine's six acre lots, one for each one of my boys. But yet the county says, no, it's got to be, no, this way. And that's not where the roads are going to be, because there isn't going to be any. But that's been my concerns, and also the secondary water. The first Vicaro Village was supposed to have pressurized water. They did not get it. They got a pipe coming to each home, and each home has to supply their own pump. Having worked in pumping water most of my life, they don't have three-phase power at the reservoir, and it will take three-phase power or a diesel engine to supply enough water for that many homes. Okay?
Hi, my name's Alexi Vigil. I live at 664 South, 7500 West, right next to where they're wanting to rezon. So one of the key principles that was stated within that general plan was that growth would be carefully deliberated and designed in a manner to preserve, complement, and honor the agrarian roots of the community. Obviously, the goal is to build the gap between protecting the property rights and preserving the community. If you ask what comes to mind when you mention smart growth principles, it's usually well-planned and increment growth over time. I'm not against growth, because obviously that's the way everybody goes in the community, but this is a significant impact on such a small area. Reese currently only has 207 homes in it on 7500 acres, and this plan is proposing to add at least 100 additional homes, which results in a 50% increase on 76 of the acres that are there. There's no sewer that's adequate to deal with it. None of us are on sewer. We all have septics. And there's no adequate roads. 7500 turns into a dirt road right after my property, right where the rezon wants to be. And 700 is a dirt road as well. So changes of this magnitude all at once will have major impacts on the culture and the infrastructure as discussed before. And on such a small footprint, it doesn't seem like very small growth when we've talked about things that are within reach as far as hospitals and markets and things of that nature. And we talk about the agrarian roots, but we're taking away all of the agriculture that's out there with this rezon by putting these 100 homes on that land because it is all farmland. And the ditch that was just previously discussed is on my property as well. And I don't want to see anyone have those problems of kids. I have a young one. I don't want them going in a ditch and the ditch across the street and everything. It's concerning. And it's a risk that people take living out there. That's my comment.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie Judkins. I live at 724 South, 7500 West, and will be also directly impacted. Thank you for your presentation. It was helpful to see that. Currently, 7500 West, like you mentioned, is identified as a minor collector street to support subdivision. However, it's a substandard road with only a 38-foot right-of-way between the proposed development and 900 South. The general plan requirement for this type of street is 80 feet. The road is a single lane with 15-foot of roadway, which only allows one car passage. So two cars can't pass on the road unless they pull into one of our homes. They have to pull off onto the gravel into our lawns and into our areas. It also has a 14-foot drainage ditch on the east side of the roadway to support agriculture drainage. The west side of the right-of-way is the middle of a major irrigation canal. Given these details, the roadway cannot support the proposed traffic resulting from this rezon and subsequent development, and does not meet the requirements set in the new master plan. The road currently has five homes, North and 900 South. This development would increase the traffic by 10 to 20 times on a substandard road. So I just wanted to come to you today to let you know that I am against this rezon. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Blake Gordon. I live at 840 South, 7500 West. Yes. I'm here to, the rezoning of RE15 rezoning permits. The land principal use 1.2 states the area plan, the medium-sized residential lot should be the areas that access sewer services with installation sewer infrastructure at the sole expense of the developer. Currently, there are no service sewer services available on Reese. I'm just kind of going off everybody else on this, on septic tanks. But I did read, and I read that today, that there is a little mountain sewer company. Supposedly. The only thing I know out there is two little ponds that Western Zirconian pumps their sewer and probably great solid minerals. So I don't 100 homes and septic tanks. It's not going to work. I don't think. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Callene Ingram. I live at 710 South, 7500 West. Hi, I'm Calleen Ingram. I live at seven-ten south, seventy-five hundred west. And I agree with what Lexi said about the impact and Leslie and Wade, so I won't go over all that again. I do have a question, a comment and a question. So, today, a document was uploaded that was from Weber Basin Land and Livestock, and it talks about, so the development is seventy-six acres, but forty acres of that is Weber Basin Land and Livestock. And it's a letter saying, hey, they have permission to rezone this forty-acre property. But I looked at the parcel number, and that parcel number is actually two-hundred-and-seventy-six acres. So, it's a forty-acre piece that runs back to the canal. And then north, on the north side of the canal, it runs to seven hundred north. So, my question is, does the planning commission require them to subdivide that property into two lots prior to a rezone request? Because if not, you're looking at two-hundred two-hundred-and-four acres plus the seventy-six acres applying for an RE fifteen rezone application. So, that's my question. And I, I am not against develop, development, and I'm not against homes. I just think the amount is substantial for such a small area. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Levi Giles, and I live in Vaquero Village at six-eighty-eight south, seventy-one hundred west. And I'm actually, so I'm in Vaquero Village Phase One. One of the things that I have that I'm against with all of this development is we're still in Phase One, that is incomplete. So, we have no pathways that were promised, no, you know, secondary water. It's been a disaster. Barely got it up and running last, last year. Yards were lost. So, to see a development of this size, I can't imagine how, how big of a disaster it could be. So, to rezone the farmland that's out there for dense housing, this would be one of the biggest developments. It would be out in West Warren, where everybody's moved to go to farmland. Not against farm, or not against like housing, like everybody else has said, but to have a hundred and seven homes in a small area with two exits, you know, and seventy-five hundred and seventy-one hundred, that, that's, this is crazy. So, I am against this rezone. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Eldon Davis. I live at seventy-ninety west, nine hundred south. I have some concerns, part of what has been covered. I talked to the president of the Culinary Water District out there, that currently, they have not signed an agreement with these folks. They have been approached, but nothing has been done. I don't believe it's appropriate to carry on without approval of a culinary water. I think the same thing can be said for the septic tank systems. The ground has been percolated, hasn't, the health department hasn't done their due diligence, because they haven't probably been asked. I'm sure that's the problem. So, that's a couple of my concerns. As well as the water from there. That drain ditch goes by my house. How's that? It's not there, but prior to that. All the water from seventy-two hundred, from sixty-seven goes down that ditch. It's a lot of water for a ditch, particularly once they pipe it and trying to get rid of that amount if you have a wet year like we have. I mean, our fields have been flooded, as been mentioned. So, that's some things I think they need to. Plus, these other people on seventy-five hundred have to give up their houses to widen the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't know, we're mostly related. So, there's like my uncles and my cousins and my dad, and we're all there. And so, thanks, Chair, for taking our public comments. First, first and foremost, oh, sorry, I screwed it up, didn't I? I am Nate Davis. I do not live there. I live in West Haven at thirty-four forty-eight south, fifty-one hundred west. I don't have to say my own address very often. One, in the notification on the website, and there are some problems with A-one and A-two. So, next time you notify stuff, clarify that, even though we know that A-one and A-two for a single-family dwelling is the same square footage for the zone. It really doesn't matter, but it kind of does when we talk about specifics. First thing is, I think the application is very much incomplete in this zone process. And for all of us to take off work to be here, we want to argue a complete application. It's not getting denied. You know, so that'd be nice on your part to drive that and say, hey, if we're gonna have people come here to get off work, let's get this completed and get all our ducks in a row and go from there. We know that they have a right to zone it as A-two and put some houses on there. And those property rights are there, and that's what they are now. Currently, you, we, I would recommend you ask any of these developers that come through here to start doing transportation studies on dumping all this traffic on a road. If you, this RE fifteen zone, you have about one-hundred-and-nine lots, you have approximately two-hundred-and-seventy cars in that hole, just a little spot. You got a canal company. I hope somebody hears from the canal company saying, hey, how are we gonna protect these people? Can we ask the developer to pipe the canal, so we don't have to worry about safety things? And water leaking into the end of this property, you know that the groundwater on those northern lots is gonna be really high because of the canal leakage. And to the other comments, pipe the ditch on the southern side, so we don't have to have any problems with any kids worrying about getting in the ditch when it's high and things of that. The road seventy-five hundred been beat on. Time to finish Phase One. I rent property adjacent to that. It still needs to be fixed and finished up. And, and to drive the point to finish it. And I know you can't do this on septic. You're gonna have to run the sewer to, it's like four miles away currently. If Black Pine gets it there, they still got plus a mile to run the sewer to get to this subdivision, which is still far. And we want to bring up secondary water, how you're gonna service it, why, and, and how you're gonna get it there. And, I mean, you're talking about a half a million gallons a month of water that these houses are gonna use. They have to be on a sewer system. And there's not one even close by. And I hope you address the well that's on the property. There's an artesian well that sits in on the one side. It ran for a long time. Let's see if I have any more. That's all my comments. Thank you, guys. I hope I don't have to see you again in a while.
Thanks.
Hey, I'm Doug Hall. I live on seventy-two thirty-four west, nine hundred south. So, I live right on the main thoroughfare going east to west. And that road is just horrible. And it's just gonna explode with, when we get more development. And it's, it's kind of a divided lane with the yellow dotted line, a solid yellow line until we get to like seventy-one hundred, just a little bit after that. And then it turns into a raceway. And as we've lived out there for a number of years, and we've gone to all the meetings for the legacy highway, and gone to all the meetings for the prison they wanted to put down, Little Mountain, we've gone to all the meetings that they wanted to do the, with the, the road widening. And, you know, our concern for our, our safety and our kids and, and just driving and getting in and out of our driveway. We've had a concern with the speed and the number of cars and, and we brought that up a number of times. And one time, when we brought this up to the, during the road construction, they admitted that the, the county doesn't have the money to fund police to patrol the area. And it's not. You can, just outside our window in the morning, you can hear the cars just blasting by. And it's a good thing that shift change isn't when the kids are going to school or, it's just, it's just a nightmare. That road's just horrible. And we know that development is coming, but that transportation's gotta be a major, a major concern. One thing that we need to think about is there's only one road in and one road out. Often, once in a while, we have an accident that closes down the road. And, and there's no escape. That's the one more, one road in, and if there's something happen, you're just stuck there. And that's something to be considered. I just hate to see the, this be a precedent setting zoning thing changing. We've had one acre lots forever and septic tank, and I hate to see a precedent be set letting people do quarter acre lots. Nothing magical about one acre lots, but there's gotta be more planning involved. Appreciate it. Let me take the time. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Brent Davis. I live at seventy-four oh-six west, nine hundred south. On this plan, it, he talked about walkways along the canal. I don't think Warren Irrigation will let him put it on their canal property. The other thing is the first phase of Vaquero Village was supposed to have green space and everything. And they moved it down on the forty acres north of it. And I don't know if this shows, but they allowed him to put additional houses because he moved it down there. So, that green space needs to stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Morgan Olson. I live at six-eighty-three south, seventy-one hundred west. So, I am in Phase One of Vaquero Village. I just want to echo what Mr. Davis said. We were promised a lot of green space. I feel like we, me and my husband, were personally mostly affected because our house is here. Green space was supposed to be right next to us and approx, what's the word, right in front of us. And instead, they built three more houses, which is fine. My boss friends ended up moving across from us. But there is no green space proposed in this besides the pond, which I don't think you can count that as green space, because it's all water. And along the lines of water, like was brought up right at the beginning, we have never had secondary water. We are the second house in closest to the pond, and we've never been able to get water to our house. We don't have a pump. We haven't put in our yard yet, because we saw how many of our neighbors put in their yards, and then they got burned up because they couldn't use secondary water. Some of our neighbors had to tie into culinary water, which we were told we're not supposed to do, but they said, we'll take the fine, because they just put in a brand-new yard. And then also the septic tank issue. We have our septic tank. There's no way you could fit the leach field and all the stuff you need on quarter acre lots. And then bringing in city sewer is gonna be crazy. And also, in Phase One, we just all put in these brand-new septic systems, which were tens of thousands of dollars. So, if they bring in city sewer, then will we have to then hook into it? Can we keep our septic systems?
Thank you.
I have to tell everybody, I'm not related to any of you. Well, and it's you.
Hi, I'm Anna Giordano. I live at seventy-eight fifty-two S, nine hundred south, out in West Warren or Reese. My only concern, and well, there's a lot of concerns, and they've all been well addressed and well spoken. A lot of thought went into all of this. Congratulations. And my concern is the park. Our little park went, was great when there was just a few of us out there. And now, our park is overloaded. I never get to hardly, well, I don't go to the park a lot, but we do rent the pavilion, which everybody knows it's booked solid. And green space in a park, I need to know the difference. Is there a difference that you can tell me? Bren, anybody?
Won't answer questions at the end.
Oh, okay. So, okay, I want to know the difference between green space and a park, because actually, if you're gonna bring in that many homes and that many children, I think we need a park, like a big park for softball fields, soccer fields, baseball fields. That's gonna take up quite a bit of the acreage that they might want to maybe not put all of those houses instead of, and put some, you know, facilities in to be recreated on, because the little park we have now won't, we don't have, you know, we don't have enough acreage for those kind of recreational sports. So, that was my concern is, and I need to know the difference between green space and a park. And who is responsible for the park to give up the property? Should it be the developer, or how does that work? Okay?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Davis, seventy-five ninety-eight west, nine hundred south, out in West Warren. I've got a few questions. Felix said seventy-five hundred needs to be widened to eighty-foot road. There's already houses on there, and there's been a, there's been a problem in there since they built the canal. I don't know if you guys are aware of, but on the west side of that road is the canal. They're not, I don't think they're gonna move the canal to build the eighty-foot road. And maybe going north, if you could make eighty-foot road, but if you go eighty-foot to the south, you're in like all those people's houses out. So, to me, that kind of makes this a no-go from the beginning. The other thing is, is I've come to the, when you were doing your master plan, and you were talking about there's gotta be a park every so many distances. I don't see a park there at all. And the other one is, is the sewer. I went to a meeting, they're gonna widen, the county's got some money, and they're gonna widen the road through the west. At that meeting, I asked, I says, are we gonna put a sewer line in there going west? No, there's no plans for a sewer line down nine hundred south. When we started the negotiations on the road with that they were gonna widen clear back, I don't know how many years, when they done it from forty-seven hundred, we was told that the sewer plant that is down there at Little Mountain could not be expanded, because the system they use there is not legal to expand anymore. So, that's my concern is. So that's my concern is why are we even looking at something like this when the infrastructure is how many years away? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We need the rest of the Davis family.
I, I would echo all their concerns. As I look at each of you in the eye, what I'm concerned about amongst all the infrastructure issues is my community. I know those people. I've lived with them. And we've had a great little community. And, and I think I know there's a, a balance, and I'd hate to be in your shoes. There's a balance trying to say, what's the lone landowner entitled to versus how it affects the community? But to come in and in my personal opinion, you'll never see those hundred homes integrate into that community the way the rest of the people are. Because it's too much. It's too concentrated. Concerns about about the drainage. Uh, currently they dump some water into our, in our side. Infrastructure is, is huge as you've, everybody has expressed, but uh, I guess I would think about the, the effect on the community, the personal effect as well as, as that. Appreciate your, your responses. Uh, maybe if I could, I, I sat in your other pre-meeting and that was very interesting to me. I didn't even know that happened. Uh, and, and you all had some concerns in that meeting. I don't know if you generally express those to the public. But I don't want these people to see you as the enemy. When I sat in there and I heard your concerns. So if you're of a mind too, I think that would be beneficial to these people to hear some of those. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, um, I, I do want to recognize one. Uh, sorry, I'm going to pull it up here on my phone from an, uh, comment that was submitted uh, by Robert Larsik. Thank you. I was going to slaughter that last name. Um, he had a lot of the similar concerns related to infrastructure and, and the growth um, in the area. I think we've seen a lot of those and the, his, uh, his comments will be made part of the record on this as well. Correct? Okay. All right. Thank you. No further public comments. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I got a motion. Wait a second.
Second.
Yeah, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I, I really appreciate a lot of the of, of all these comments and, and Mr. Davis's last remark there. Um, I think the planning commission had a lot of those same comments that were brought up in our pre-meeting. So what our pre-meeting is, is it's an opportunity uh, to staff to kind of brief us on. Um, and for us to kind of bring up any clarifying questions out of the, out of the packets. It is a meeting that is open to the public. Um, but that generally happens thirty minutes before our, our regular meetings. So uh, just a couple of things I want to clarify before, you know, the rest of the, the commission chimes in with me. Um, I heard a few times mentioned of quarter acre lots. Uh, this doesn't go down that low. The, the density on this is third. The, the RE fifteen zone goes down to there through some smart growth pin principles. If they are implemented, then it could go a, a, a hair smaller, but in the, the plans that we've seen, seen up to this point. Um, I think the smallest I seen on there was about a fourteen thousand square foot lot. The majority of them are, are actually half acre and, and larger in there. So that was just a clarifier. Um, a clarifier in, clarifying point in regards to the sewer. Um, sewer is being ran um, from Little Mountain through another development that's taking place on the north side, or excuse me, on the south side of the tracks coming up seventy five hundred. Um, Little Mountain Sewer is a lagoon sewer and they don't have a lot of capacity. But actually this morning in the county commission meeting, uh, the commission approved um, going into a, a joint venture with some grant funding from uh, Utah Department of Environmental Quality to start the process of redoing Little Mountain Sewer and changing it over to a mechanical sewer plant um, to handle future growth in the area. So that is in the works as well, um, as, as part of that. And like I mentioned, that did just get approved in by the commission, county commission in today's meeting uh, this morning. So I'll, I'll kind of run through these and try and address them as a whole because a lot of you had a lot of the same concerns. So regarding septic tanks um, on this density, the, the health department would not allow septic tanks. It would have to go to sewer. Um, and so, and that would be at the cost of the developer to bring sewer to the project to ensure that, you know, it met the demand that was needed. And I'll take a step back and, and that was uh, a concern of the commission, the planning commission had of why we are seeing this application at this time um, without letters of acknowledgement um, that need, that should be uh, included in these rezone applications for us to hear them and, and I, you know, to I'm going to say Mr. Davis a lot, but hopefully you know which one I'm, I'm directing the comment to, but to, to Mr. Nate Davis's comment, you know, it, it is a lot for you guys to take off of work and come here and you know, and express your concerns and stuff. And, and I agree with you. Um, you know, if seeing an incomplete application and, and for you to be here, I think a lot of these concerns could have been addressed if those letters would have been there. And, and hopefully moving forward, that doesn't happen. Um, for, for the planning commission's sake and for yours as well. So hopefully that covers the, the sewer and septic concern. Um, I'll talk a little bit on culinary water, same route, same boat. I mean, the, the letter should have been that at least Warren, West Warren water, aware of the project. And you know, so that they could have put some of the requirements, if there are any to handle this type of a, you know, a, a growth on their system like someone had mentioned. And I'm not sure the numbers that you exactly stated, but I mean, we're adding a third to what's out there right now in the community. So there are some potential large impacts to the, the Warren, West Warren system. Um, I'm going to jump over to parks and, and as I do this, I'm going to lump them all into kind of the same response. Um, but I, I do have the same concerns with parks. Um, the developer in our package, you might have noticed is, is operative fee and lieu um, of the open space. That's something that the Taylor West Weaver Parks District has been open to and has been accepting. They're in a little bit different situation than the Warren or, or than the Reese Parks District area. Um, because Taylor doesn't have a park and they're trying to get some money to build a park out here. You guys have a park. Um, so a- as we talk on those three items, parks, sewer and, and um, water, that, that's where those own entities, we, we as a planning commission shouldn't govern what those own entities and those own boards and, and what they want to see for their future. So that's why we want to see those letters from those entities to what they want and, and what they feel they need to, to make this application whole and, and that direction there. Um, Ms. Giordano, your comment, green space and park space um, in everyone else can weigh in on this one as well, but in my opinion, they're, they're kind of one in the same. Is it green open space that's dedicated? You know, a, a certain portion of it that's going to be agricultural land and it's, it's going to have that conservation easement on it as ag and green space. Is it a park? Uh, in, in my, my understanding, it's, it's open space and, and what that open space can be used for, you know, in the future and i- i- am I?
Yeah. Chair, um, this is where the, a letter from the Parks District would be very important. The Parks District knows what kind of capacity they have. They know what their needs are. That's why sometimes the Park District is more interested in part of the land and sometimes they're more interested in a fee and lieu so that they can build some of the facilities on the open space to make it an actual park instead of just open space. So we really lean on our um, on our Parks District to, to let us know what it is the community needs.
No, and, and as far as the open space, you know, put into some kind of a conservation agreement, that is a little bit, a little bit different in that it's held differently. It doesn't belong necessarily to a Parks District. I guess it probably could be implemented into it. But it, it's not necessarily held the same way. Um, it's not looked at the same way. And, and the open space kind of could potentially lead down the road to a lack of care of that property. So that's why I think kind of in general, and I'm not trying to speak for everybody on the planning commission, but that's what's a little bit favorable about having these, these um, properties or fees in lieu go to the Parks District because as was mentioned, Parks District has or, or will have a good idea of what their, their long-term plan is and where that will be best used. So hope that helps a little bit.
Thank you for that. Um, Director Grover?
I had some concerns about phase one. Um, some of the residents talked about the improvements not being installed, secondary water. Um, some of those things. And I think it might be good to have the applicant address that and maybe have the applicant um, have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I'll give him an opportunity after I get through the rest of mine.
That was a concern I had.
I, it was a great concern. I had no idea that phase one wasn't complete. And I mean, to get the half acre density that they did back when that code was here, there should be quite a few improvements, I feel, to get the density that's down there. So thank you, Director. Um, I'm going to jump on drainage a little bit. Um, to, to jump right to it and say that, you know, what drainage ditches are going to be piped and everything like that. It, it's hard to say at this stage of that. That generally comes when we get into the subdivision phases of that. Um, that's when the county engineer will come in and say, this is what needs to be done to meet the drainages and everything like that. Um, I will say from a stormwater perspective and, and a runoff from this as a future development. Um, they, the, the development will have to build retention ponds. They will have to retain the eightieth percentile store or the water from the eightieth percentile storm. So they're, they're, they've got to retain that water. It shouldn't put a huge influx inflow in existing ditches, but um, the, there, those things will come as we get later into the phases. Um, sorry, as I look through this, yes, like Director Grover mentioned, a huge concern of what's going on with phase one and why that hasn't been addressed before we get into a, whether it's the second phase or a new name of a subdivision, it uh, it's all tied together. Um, I, I believe when we talked roads, Felix had mentioned um, from staff that the county engineer had already recommended that there needs to be a traffic study done to see the impact on the roads in the area. Um, that would be something the developer would have to do and bring back to the county uh, engineering staff to go back and weigh in and see what needs to be done. Um, when it comes to roads and, and widths and right of ways of those roads. Um, you know, there, there are some challenging constraints out there. But you know, like, like you had mentioned on seventy five hundred west, but that's why the county and, or we have a, a substandard road ordinance that based on the impact that's going to come in, that ordinance will, you know, make them do upgrades to those roads and you know, I, I, I don't can't speak for what's going to happen in the future, but when you've got, you know, homes impacted in a canal, you know, maybe that canal is going to have to go in a box covert or something to fit that through. So you're not impacting those neighbors. And you know, when that takes place, that's all, you know, as part of that development comes and it's, it's at the developer to, to make those necessary changes. There, there was a great comment that was made about community and, and the change and, and what comes with that community. And I, I weigh that two ways because I agree. I mean, you know, growing up in this area and, you know, seeing all the homes and uh, you know, for, for my sake, I, I live on a in Taylor on another part where uh, West Haven's my back fence boundary and I've got a ton of lovely townhomes coming right against my back fence. And it's really fun to go out there and let the kids go out every other night in the pastures and the hayfield and pick up all the trash that blows over from the development, which it's frustrating, but like, I'm not against growth. It's coming. It's, you know, it, it's inevitable. We've just got to be smart in the way we plan it. But I'm going to flip that. And, and there was another comment that was made that kind of struck home with me when I thought community was, you know, just like uh, in the first phase of Akaro, you know, the, the comment was made, they didn't necessarily want those additional lots come, but look what come from it. They made a new great friend. And you know, and, and so I would hope a lot of that came or, or would come from, you know, the growth and, and as the community changes, it, it adapts to the, to the growth and, and what's in the future. So I might have missed a few. I know you guys made some notes. Please weigh in.
Chair, I, I, I have one uh, that I just want to clarify. Uh, and it was on what part of that parcel that Mary it's own uh, will get rezoned. And I just want to firm, but I'm assuming that it will only be the part that's, that's part of this, this uh, proposed uh, uh, development, correct? Okay. So hope, hopefully that helps. Uh, I think that was Ms. Ingram that gave us that question. So I want to make sure that that was addressed.
Just for my sake, can I ask a clarifier on that? Just because I'm, I, I was a great point to be brought up because I, I noticed that as well. I uh, skipped over, but so does that property I tax ID need to be changed so that it's separate or what will be the defining change in that?
The defining will be when you guys approve that boundary and then that will be part of the subdivision. So you're only proving, approving what is actually identified.
Okay.
And, and it'll stay on the same title or does that get retitled after it's? No, you can split um, properties, but officially they won't be split till it's subdivided. You're only approving what you're identifying.
Thank you for that, Director. Yeah.
One other um, issue that Morgan Olson brought up was if they would be able to keep their new septic systems. How does that work when septic comes in? I mean, when sewer comes in?
That's a very good question. Um, they are allowed to keep that um, until the health department requires them to connect in typically when it fails is when they typically required that to happen. So, yeah, so they can continue on and tell they have the health department requires them to.
Missioners, anything else before we invite the applicant up? Okay, Mr. Burns. Hopefully didn't grill you too hard.
Uh, Pat Burns, fourteen oh seven North Mountain Road. Um, first I kind of want to just say, um, as you guys know, I've been to lots and lots of planning commission meetings and this is, I'm literally in them every week. Um, I just want to say I'm very impressed with this is very rare to have a community that comes up organized. They know what they're talking about. It's not just emotion. It's fact, but it's this, I'm very, very impressed. That was uh, very, very, very good. Um, first I wanted to address the uh, Bakero Phase One. I did not develop Bakero Phase One. I just want that to be clear. That was not me. I bought five, six lots in there and built some houses and the developer never put this, the gas in, didn't put the power in. I was ready for C of O. I had to pay to put all of that in just so I could protect my own investment. He went bankrupt. I had to buy him out of it. That's how I ended up even with Bakero Phase One and Two. It wasn't, I didn't design it. The, the secondary water system is absolutely horrible. I didn't design it. It was all in before I, I merely bought lots. Um, but the uh, really good thing is I have a solution for that as we can build out Bakero Phase Two, which is now not Bakero ever again. Uh, and uh, so that's, that's the, that's I think a pretty important fact that I, I had nothing to do with it. I merely, I, I was a victim as well as to a horrible development. I bought lots and lost uh, uh, quite a bit of money. Um, but anyway, that's uh, that, that I just want to kind of make that, that clear.
Mr. Burns, can I ask a clarifying question with that, Pat? So you bought lots or you bought the development as well?
I bought, I bought lots first and I went to go build the homes. We had to build the homes off of generators. I mean, it was horrible. It was not.
But then, so then you come back and bought the entire development? Is that what you said?
Yeah. So I had to pay. Yeah. So sorry, I apologize. I had to, I built the homes and I had three or four at C of O certificate, certificate of occupancy and I can't get certificate of occupancy without power and, or without gas. And so the developer didn't have any more money to put in the power and gas. So I was at a loss. So I paid out of my pocket to put all the power, all the gas, the rest of the infrastructure in for the development. So I could get my CFO and sell my houses. They were already sold. I had.
But not actually buying the entire developer?
The developer didn't have any money. And so he told me he did. And so I put the infrastructure in. And then when I said, look, hey, just give me the lots. If you don't have the money, I'll just take some more lots in lieu of you paying me. Well, then I found out they had over leveraged all of the lots. They were actually in foreclosure that the lender who had loaned them the money was in the process of foreclosing on them, which I would have then lost all of my money I put in and, you know, been out everything. So I bought the subdivision out of foreclosure. So I just, in order to protect my investments, I bought the rest of the subdivision.
So you, okay. So that's what it is. You ended up purchasing the entire subdivision.
Correct.
So you can see why these citizens would be concerned with your actions as
Hundred percent.
As you bought into it as a business deal, right? And so now it becomes your responsibility, whether the previous person did whatever before, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks, Pat.
No, I absolutely understand it. And No, I absolutely understand it. And the developer had put in. The the uh, you know, he actually did a cash escrow, so there was escrow for the stuff that need to be remaining. But I had been working a deal with 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 the staff and everything that if we can get to phase two. I will actually increase some of the improvements in phase one to make it even better than what they had originally proposed. Um. So we will put in a pressurized secondary, which will fix all of those problems. Um. And uh, what we'll do is we'll use the existing gravity fed line that goes to everybody's house as just a sleeve and we'll put in. Whatever my engineers require for the uh size of a pressurized secondary line. Um, and then, Bryn, you were, you've addressed the sewer really well. Thank you. And yeah, we do plan on taking the sewer out and. And we've been working on that for. I mean, I've been to probably thirty different meetings on that. We've changed minds twenty different times and it's been uh, it's been eventful. Um. As far as not having um all the stuff for the application, that is definitely falls back on us. And um, part of the. The problem was I had this all approved and was working with Randy Marriott and then. You know, he passed away and so. There was a lot of time in between where we couldn't get all the answers, so I couldn't go to the water company to say. Unless I had the permission of the Marriott, so we had to work all of that out. So we finally got it worked out, but. Just not in time to get all the letters done. And so. Um, that has been worked out and we will absolutely readdress that and then. Get everything in and we can have those. Uh, I'm I'm slated to go with the Parks Department in two days. I'll meet with them. Get it done and then I'll get back on the water. I did present it to the water, but again, I they. They said, what do you want, Pat? And I said, well, until I get a, this was literally like four days or a week after Randy had died and we just hadn't. I didn't have an answer, but I at least wanted to go to the meeting and address, you know, what I had come. Um. Um. I think that's about it. Do you need any other questions for me? A lot of the notes I had you guys had already addressed, so.
Well, just a quick question on the secondary water. Are you planning on using Mountain View for that?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Mountain View will be taken over.
And secondary only?
Secondary only, yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other comments for the developer?
I, can I make a question slash comment about the road access? Um, I mean, that's a big concern for the residents and something that worried me is this is a very isolated area and so improving the roads. Where it might go, I I guess from my opinion, if we're if we're gonna do this, then we need to make sure that it's not significantly affecting the area and it's it's in a significant investment to make sure that. They can get to services. Are are you ready and willing to put the infrastructure that uh like? The road systems we're talking, um. I mean, there even the thoughts that if we're going to widen to eighty feet, then we'd have to put in some sort of a um box culvert. All right, do you have this all figured out?
So, um, and Charlie could probably answer this a little better than I can, but I'll give it a stab. The eighty foot. Right away would just be that's. On a map, that's a main artery road that should be an eighty foot right wide, right or right, right of way. Whether it is or not, I don't know what what's gonna be required, but to make it non-substandard road, we need twenty four feet of asphalt. So there's plenty of room to make a twenty four, a non-sub, what's the proper term, non-substandard?
Substandard road.
So that whatever that would take, but that's we could, we can make that happen. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so y- your plan is to widen it to twenty four feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. If nothing else, Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Burns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, any discussion, Commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I'm, I can make a motion if you're ready for it. Um. I move we uh table action on file. ZMA two zero two three dash zero four, a developer initialed that initiated application to amend the Weber County zoning map to rezone a seventy six. Acre parcel located at six forty south, seventy five hundred west from the A two zone to the RE fifteen zone. I guess we didn't discuss a date.
I think until they bring in the pertinent documents that are required.
I think, uh, until they bring in uh water, sewer and uh parks letters. For our, um. For our consideration. And. And also that the applicant can get us more information on traffic impacts to nine hundred south. I mean, I guess you can do the comments on the motion.
No, uh, okay, I have a motion. I have a second. We had a motion and a second to table. Any discussion on the motion?
Need to add? Like to be considered?
I think we, I think it covered all items um with.
One additional thing. We had some concerns in the work session that are highlighted by our staff as well, that we that would. It'd be nice to be able to address that with the developers as well.
Pertaining to the roadways and and the connections and stuff, yeah.
Access to pond and things like that, so.
Okay. With that, I will call for a vote. Commissioner McCormick.
Hi.
Commissioner Angie Adi. Commissioner Favero.
Hi.
Commissioner Wickern.
Hi.
Commissioner Neville.
Hi.
Commissioner Clontz.
Hi.
Chair votes high as well. Okay, that will be tabled until more information can be brought back. Thank you and thank you all for coming and and your comments and I really appreciate you being. So, next item is for public comments for items not on tonight's agenda. Does anybody want to get up and speak again? Yeah?
Anna, you're down on seventy eight fifty two west, nine hundred south and a west Warren, Utah. Okay, so since we have a captive audience and all these people live there. I just want to bring up the road and the speed limit and the lack of. Officers out there. I'm telling you what, there's this little black car and I swear to God, I. You've all heard it, haven't you? Five o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the afternoon, I'm telling you, we need some help out there. And I know this isn't probably the right place, but I have a podium and an audience. Yay.
And a microphone.
Sorry. Okay, well, I was just wondering if they've ever considered, and I know we've talked to Mr. Grover and a couple of people about. Slowing the traffic down. And I know they say.
Anna, can I interrupt you? Will will the public please? Mute yourself so we can hear Anna clearly, please.
So.
And Anna, just continue to use the microphone for June's sake.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if if we could get some help out there to be great and I would, from nineteen hundred all the way down to west to the Little Mountain. I wonder if there's ever a possibility to consider some four way stops on thirty five hundred. Possibly even on twenty seven hundred would be a three way stop. And down by the park, seventy eight or seventy one hundred. Um, it's it's getting to the point where you cannot get out on that road. It's it's getting, it's getting. It's getting pretty scary, to tell you the truth. And we've always heard, well, the traffic, um. What do you call it? When they, the study says that it's good for like fifty miles an hour because of the road, the kind of road it is. But we, I noticed a lot of different roads around Weber County that same road, same road patterns. They're forty five miles an hour. They're forty miles an hour. They have the four corner stops on them. And those, and and really, it isn't this, I mean, the semis are horrible, but it's the people going to work out there that are going. Seventy, eighty, ninety miles an hour, and I'm not kidding you, they are, they they'll pass us and be gone in a instant. So I just wonder if we could get that in the record somewhere that they could maybe start. Working towards a little bit of traffic control out there. And maybe not just the sheriff, but actually seeing if we couldn't do some stops along the way on that road. That's a concern for me. Okay, thanks.
I'll just add to that just a little bit. You know, there's four way stops on thirty five hundred west at thirty three hundred south and eighteen hundred south. And up until recently, there wasn't much more traffic on the road, those those four way stop corners than there is on nine hundred south. So I've I've got to agree that that really it's time for something to start happening out that way.
Actually, there's probably less still.
There may be, there may be.
I think, you know, to that concern, the comment, you know, from nineteen hundred to forty seven hundred, the county don't have a lot of say in that's a U dot road. U dot dictates the the speed limits. They'll do a traffic study and they go off the eighty fifth percentile of what vehicles are traveling. So that could potentially raise the speed limit out there if they went off of that model, but I don't disagree. I mean, it's something that should be looked at and and Director Grover, hopefully in in the planning meetings or or meetings with the commission. Because as much as we agree, we have no poll or no control or anything that we could do to help that other and. As a citizen, just like you going to the commissioners and saying, look, something needs to be done. So the more. Ears that can be bent on the on the commissioners upstairs to to do that, though, they're the ones that make that decision and. My understanding is speed limits are, they can choose be in the governing body to address those speed limits, correct?
That is correct, but they also um rely on our traffic engineers, so.
Yeah. And that's the problem, because then they do the eighty fifth percentile of what everybody's driving and that's what we get. So, sorry, go ahead, man.
So Wesley Judkins, yeah, I live on seventy five hundred west. So I'm gonna tail on to here. Um. Seventy five hundred west is. I don't even know if you call it a road. It's only paved a little bit, but that's fine, but. You know, I retired recently from public service, local government, thirty years. And I was in HR, risk management, so I know what it takes for employees as well. When you start adding all of this, we can't even get our road taken care of. There's cows, there's tires, there's oil drums, there's. Furniture.
Mattresses, I was there yesterday.
Yeah, all the way down that road. I have pictures. I was gonna send an email to the county commissioner, so I'll probably do that. Um, because it's awful. And so on top of that, you build these developments. I again. And with everybody else, I'm not against growth. I worked for local government. I understand it. Um, but you have to have the employees to maintain it as well. And that also comes at a cost to the county. Um, and to us as taxpayers. So another thing to think about all these broad. Things is to think of everything that also has to come in behind it to help support it. That's my extra comment. Thank you.
That's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay. Remarks from the. Planning Commissioners, Commissioners, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners. I think uh I think we covered that well tonight and uh did a good job. So thanks for that.
And once again, I'll thank the public. It's, you know, Mr. Burns stated it as well, but it's great to see a community come together and come in with, you know. Facts and and to the point and, you know, it it was excellent. So I I really thank you all for taking the time to be here, so. With that, Director Grover?
Uh, I'll second that as well. Uh, I thought that the public articulated their comments and I appreciate you as a planning commission, how you handled yourselves and taking those comments in. And um, I appreciate in the tabling of the motion that you gave specifics on what we need to address to come back to you. With the applicant taking care of those things, so thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Director Grover. Liam? Oh, great. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion. Do adjourn.
Motion.
By a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I, thank you. Thank you for being here.